...of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
All right, we're all here this evening. Go ahead and move on to public participation. We have the recognition of the photo contest winners. I have a blurb here and then I'll, I'll bring the winners up to the podium, but I'll read this first. Does that make sense? This was the Village of Montgomery It Feels Like Home Photo Contest. Back in May, the village asked residents to submit photographs that captured the natural beauty and character of Montgomery, documenting in visual form the environment, architecture, and people that make our community such a unique and welcoming place for residents to call home. To say that we were impressed by the dozens of entries we received is an understatement. The volume and quality of submissions to the photo contest this year speak to the immense pride that our citizens take in their community, to their acute sense of place, and to their spirited sense of fun. The photo submissions were carefully reviewed by a panel of judges that included a professional photographer, and a winning entry was selected in each of the three categories: architecture, environment, and people or activities. These winning entries were then placed on display at Montgomery Fest where nearly 100 residents cast votes to pick an overall winner. Due to the number of outstanding entries, the judging panel also saw fit to nominate three photographs for honorable mention. And we would like to recognize these submissions along with the category winners this evening. Our first -- I'll go up to the podium for this part. It's actually announcing. Hello? All right. All right, our first honorable mention photograph was submitted by Jamie Legrand here today, who submitted a photo of a flowering Parkway tree in Blackberry Crossing West. And do we have -- I'm going to point to that one if I can find it. Is she here this evening? She or he, I guess? Okay. Our second honorable mention is for Nick Allo, whose photo of cycling and fishing on the Fox River showcases our active and vibrant community. Is Nick here? Come on down. Our third honorable mention was in fact submitted by trustee Stan Bond, who captured an incredible sunset over Foxmore Lake in the Foxmore subdivision. Now, we would like to recognize the winners in each category of our photo contest for 2014. Our first place winner in the category of architecture was resident Jennifer Crocker. Is she here this evening? Her photograph showed her daughter Lexi using a little free library in the Foxmore subdivision, right there. And Jennifer was also voted third place winner overall in the Montgomery photo contest. Congratulations. Swear this thing isn't working, but it looks good. Our first place winner in the category of environment was resident Katrina Cratchit. Is she here this evening? Whose photo of a blue heron on the Fox River behind the VFW was selected by Montgomery residents as the second place overall winner of the contest. And congratulations. And, sorry, I'm kind of going verbatim now. Katrina was also selected the first place winner in the category of people and activities with the photo of a fly fisher casting his rod on the Fox River, which is this one, which looks far from the Village of Montgomery. Looks amazing. And those are our three. The village would like to congratulate all the photographers who submitted their entries for the photo contest. We're excited to showcase these excellent snapshots of and the unique character of Montgomery on our website and on our Facebook page, so look for those. I'd like to thank all the winners, the honorable mention winners, and everybody else that submitted for this contest, and we'll certainly be doing this again in the future. Can we give them all a round of applause? He's got one up there. This one's going to take a picture. I'm going to try a different microphone, or just talk loud. Next on the agenda, we're going to recognize our Montgomery Fest volunteers, which is probably why the majority of you guys are here this evening. It's a slew of names, so I'll start. And if you're here, please come down to the front and we'll take a group photo at the end. Helping with Public Works this year, we have Larry Essig. Is Larry here? You want to read these off, Denny?
He's not here.
Read off the names?
That's you got the right name.
We have Ricky Recker. And Tim. And for the food vendors, we have Tom Myers. I know he's not here. And then, I know we have, from the Community Christian Church, Shannon Gutierrez. And also from, from the church, we have John Reinheimer. And then, I don't think he's here today, but with the fishing derby and the bike corral, we have Randy Gen -- I don't want to say his last name.
Giminger.
Giminger? And then with the craft booths this year, we had Shale Nelson.
She's not here.
And then Jesse Nelson. Oh, yeah. Is that parade organizer here? Mike Hammond. And Lynette. There you go. Come on down. Yeah, do you want to read the names for the parade?
Did he say Jimmy Recker, too, was there? Did he?
Yeah, Jimmy and Tommy.
Yeah.
Awesome. I have more names to add, so you guys can -- yeah. With the Battle of the Bands, we have the judges. I don't know that either of them are here, but Andre Salz and Kevin Trudeau. They were the judges for the band, Battle of the Band. And then we have, for Settlers Cottage, we had volunteers that made that available to be open during the fest. We have Barbara Peck. She's not here. Pat Torrance. Jean Michaels. And Joan Michaels. All right. And then for the downtown walking tour, we had Donna Tebow. I don't think she's here. We're getting near the end here. And then a ton of people for the car show. Denny, you want to call these off? Denny orchestrates the car show every year.
Our chairman, Dan Dipman, is not here tonight. Did a good job. Mallory Kent's not here. Lisa Morgan. Got a couple girl judges. Mike Morgan. Have somebody take them to him. Save the postage. Paula Cartine. A fumble like you do. Rich Kent. Marvin King. Ken Newing. And that's about it. Yeah, that's it. She's not here either. Gretchen, Colleen. These are people on the walking tour that are not here. Maybe you might ask if anybody else?
Yeah. Is anybody else here that volunteered, wants to come up and be recognized? And then we also have Pete Wallers, if you want to be recognized. And then, for the first time in a number of years, we didn't give out certificates to the board members that certainly volunteered a lot of their time as well, but if you could come up and join us for the photo, I'd appreciate that. Matt? Denny?
Matt.
Teresa?
Matt. We've got one more up there.
Larry. Where's Larry's? It's probably the bottom, one all the way on the bottom.
There's Larry. Here's our biggest volunteer, right here.
Just be up there, miss.
I ain't going up.
No?
I've only was, I was here Sunday a while, and Friday, and he comes Saturday at all. That's no big deal.
Before you guys all run out of the, run out of the boardroom, I did want to say that we certainly couldn't do Montgomery Fest without you guys, and so that's why we take the time to invite you to a meeting, make you welcome, and please come back again next year and help with the fest. And even as we move forward in the planning stages for next year's fest, if you guys want to be involved with that, we want you to be involved. So, but I wanted to say that, and then you guys can -- thank you. I appreciate it. All righty. We'll move on to item C this evening, which is the public comment portion. This is where any member of the public that's, that's not on the agenda, I know we have two on the agenda, any member of the public that's not on the agenda that wishes to address the board, now would be your time. Hearing none, we'll move on. Pam Peterson is up next regarding the Cala Lily Tea Room and Salon, so if you want to come to the podium.
I would like to thank the mayor and the village board and the trustees for giving me this time to speak to you this evening and other members of the village that are here, that live here in Montgomery. I'm here on behalf of Tanya Barkdahl. She is the owner and the operator of the Cala Lily Salon Spa and Victorian Tea Room. I have been a 14-year client of Tanya's, and recently, through unemployment, she had offered me a job, so now I'm recently employed also by Tanya as the receptionist in the salon and spa. I wanted to do just a little bit of history and explain to you that in the mid-'80s, her mother, Gail, opened and moved her business to 265 North Burgen's Drive in Oswego. In 2006, after the passing of Tanya's mother, she moved her business to the current location of 1035 South Lincoln Avenue and changed the name to the Cala Lily Salon and Spa. And it's a full-service salon and spa. We do massages. We do everything that a full-service salon and spa would do. In 2010, she approached Don Wolfswelt to turn the chapel that is between Wolfswelt's Bridal Shop and the home that she turned into the salon, to ask if she could turn the chapel into a tea room. She came to the board here. It was approved in 2010 that she could turn the chapel into a tea room. A little bit of history on that building. Before it was a chapel before, for Wolfswelt's Bridal, it was a flower shop. It was a general store. And before that, it was a milk house for the farm that was on that land. And I can imagine my father, who hauled milk, Jack Meredith, who hauled milk for Oatman's Dairy, located in Aurora that has since closed. So it's got a lot of history, that little corner there on 25 in Ashland. Since the salon, the tea room opened in 2010, it has become a host to many bridal showers, many baby showers, high-T tea parties, red hat lady societies from all over the county, Kendall and Kane, and also, I'm sorry, I'm just a little nervous. And people just come to this area that knew the farm that was there, and had maybe lived or rented the house that was there, and they come to remember and sit and have tea. And for any ladies in the room that have ever had tea there, it is the most relaxing place to just sit and reminisce. In 2010, when it opened, the tea room was open Tuesday through Saturday, four hours a day. And I think that number of four hours a day, five days a week, is important. In 2010, for the short time it was opened, she made $18,969 with taxes to the village of $1,564. In 2011, it was $35,727 with taxes to the village of $2,947. 2012, $33,383 with taxes to the village of $2,034. 2013, it was $31,710. In 2014, back in April, there was an incident where the party, a private party of 14 people, three of the people in the party had salon spa services, the rest were having tea in the tea room. At this time, Tanya was put in the hospital, what we all feared of a heart attack or a stroke, and we thought we were going to lose her. These people got sick, claimed it was food poisoning, called the health department, and demanded to talk to Tanya and give these 14 people free spa services. With Tanya in the hospital, she was not able to speak to anybody, so the people filed charges with the health department and shut her down. Come to find out, these people just had that bad strain of flu that was going around with that awful winter we had, and they just had the flu. So in the process of all of this, many emails have gone back and forth to try to get the tea room opened. The health department has approved her drawings and her changes to the tea room, so she could reopen as a tea room. The problem is that it has been required for her to have a second bathroom for men. Now, I can tell you, as a customer, in five years, no man has ever stepped into that building. So why would we want to take the structural and the beauty and the integrity of that building and add a bathroom that will probably never be used? We would really like to speak to the village as if there's some way that we could grandfather that building again, because it is a historic building. The home that the tea room, the salon is, it's a 1923 Sears catalog home. So that in itself is just historic alone. The Wolfswelt's Bridal and the tea room and the salon, they all three work together in that little corner where the brides come to the salon, and then they go to the tea room and talk about what they want to do for their bridal shower. It's just a very warming place. What I have here, but I did want to tell you, I'm sorry, that in 2014, for those four and a half months that she was open, she did over $10,000 in four and a half months. 2014 was going to be a wonderful year for the Victorian Tea Room. This is emails of parties that we've had to turn away just since May. She had $7,000 worth of parties booked that she had to give deposits back because of the issue. We also have a letter from the village, the city of Aurora, that she was awarded the best award beauty salon in the category for Aurora. It's just, we'd hoped that the village would consider the issue with the second bathroom, let her go forward with the plans that the health department has approved with the changes that she needs to make to the tea room, and allow her to open back up so the red hat ladies and the Bible groups and the ladies groups can still enjoy their high tea when they want to, and the ladies that come in on Saturday morning want to go over and have tea and a sandwich when they're done with their, their services at the salon. I want to thank you very much for your time. I was a little nervous, but thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Pam. Rich, did you want to make comments just on that? I know the board is pretty familiar with the situation at this point.
Sure. Thank you. The situation, as I understand it, is when it was a tea room, there were food services that were brought in, pre-prepared foods that were brought in. That does not constitute a restaurant, per se. My understanding is that with the expansion of their kitchen and expansion of their menu, to have in-service food prepared onsite, that constitutes a restaurant. And according to the state plumbing code, we need to have two bathrooms regardless of if men go to the facility or not, partake in the services there, it requires two bathrooms, according to the state plumbing code. We've reviewed this with our plumbing inspector and with the state plumbing official. And unfortunately, that's the situation that we find ourselves in.
Thank you. I don't think it's the intent of anybody in this room to require something of you that you, you know, that you can't provide or go above and beyond what's normally required. This is state, state plumbing code, and we don't really, it sounds like we don't have any wiggle room with that. It's required by the state, and we're required to follow that. So if there's any way that we can help in, in other avenues, or in other ways, we certainly would. I think this, this board has been proven to be kind of pro-business, and we're not looking to shut you down. But it doesn't seem to be any wiggle room for us on this. So I appreciate you guys coming tonight, and feel free to reach out to any one of us or staff if you have any questions going forward.
I have a couple of questions, if I may. There's no possibility of a unisex bathroom?
There is in the tea room, an ADA accessible bathroom, and it could be used as a unisex bathroom. We were researching and I proposed that if there is a bathroom on a hundred feet of the facility, that it could be used as a second bathroom. So there is a bathroom in, of course, the salon, and Wolfswelt's have agreed that the two bathrooms over at Wolfswelt's could also be used as a second bathroom, if that is allowed by state code. But the bathroom in the tea room is ADA accessible.
Is there, and my next question is for Attorney Anderson. Is there anything that the village can do to bypass those, those state plumbing requirements, or is it really you have to abide by those?
State plumbing code is more inflexible than our local codes, and it's not one that we have the liberty of going against. And even though it might be ADA compliant, that's a different regulation. There are multiple layers of regulation that affect what can and can't be built or operated. So I don't think that those suggestions, I'm sure those have been explored by the village staff and by the state plumbing code advisors. I don't think that there's options like that available here.
I would echo President Brawley's comments as far as, it sounds as though there's nothing that we can do as far as the state plumbing codes, but I would like to see staff work something out with the owner to where we can, we're not going to put her out of business where these, the requirements can be met, and we're still, we've got to figure something out.
Yeah, if you want to come to the podium.
As the receptionist, I also take phone calls, of course, because it's part of my responsibility. When I first started there in June, of course, that's when it all happened. We would get seven to eight calls a day for people wanting private parties that we would have to, first it was, well, we're working on it, we're going to try and be open by September, and then it was, well, it doesn't look like it's going to be September. And then it was, we're not going to be able to reopen because of the requirement of the second bathroom. And I still, when I'm on the phones for the day, I still get calls. We get calls from people all over the United States, not just this area. I got a phone call from a lady in North Carolina who was coming home to see her family, wanted to get everybody together for a tea party. She was so disappointed, because she comes every year. And that's just, it's just a big meeting place for people in the area. And I myself, my niece is going to have a baby in December. I was really looking forward to having the baby shower at the tea room, but it's, if you've ever been there, it's just the most relaxing place to go and sit, and it's soul calming, and to just sit and pray and hope that somehow God will see his way to let Tanya continue. As a small woman business owner in the community that people really look forward to coming to, and I can imagine Wolfswelt's eventually is going to feel the pull, because the brides aren't going to come there anymore, because they can't plan their whole bridal experience on that little corner of Montgomery.
And we definitely don't disagree with you with that at all. And if there was something that we could do, we would. And like I said, be in touch with staff as you move forward, as you guys try and solve this problem. You know that you have some people in this room that definitely support this establishment, so. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Tony Ibrami. Is it, did I say that correctly? At the $5 shoe store, 2175 Rochester, regarding signage. He's not here this evening. So go ahead and move on. The consent agenda, I'll read the items, then entertain a motion. Minutes of the village board meeting of August 11th, accounts payable through August 20th, 2014, accounts receivable report of July 2014, appointments by the village president to the beautification committee for a term from August 1st through, 2014 through July 31st, 2016, and all the list of those folks were in the packets. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Items for separate action this evening, award of a contract for 2014 MFT improvements to Geneva Construction, the amount of $603,534.60. And with that, I'll ask our Director of Public Works, Mike Povence, to summarize.
Thank you, President Brawley. As you know, we have put forward our road program this year, which will include Winterhill Circle, Winterhill Court, Edgewater Court, High Point Court, and Seasons Ridge Boulevard, plus various patching locations around the village. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve an award of contract to Geneva Construction. We went out for bids, we received two bids. Geneva was the low bid at 603-53460, came in about $70,000 under the engineer's estimate. So it's pretty straightforward, it's primarily milling and resurfacing, there's some curb work on Seasons Ridge, and as I said, patching at different locations across town. So with that, I would take any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have a quick question. This was a budgeted item, correct?
Correct.
So we're 70,000 less, so that helps us with the increase in salt costs?
It could, it makes that money available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on this? Are there any motions on this?
I'll move to.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Item B, which is Resolution 2014-014, authorizing the use of MFT funds for the village's $70,000 contribution to the Montgomery Road Corridor Phase 1 study. That'll turn this over to Director Povence.
Thank you, President Brawley. This is an item we discussed at the August 11th board meeting, at which time we talked about the actual intergovernmental agreement to study the widening and geometric improvements and safety improvements that Kane County is looking at for Montgomery Road. As part of the budget, the village has agreed to contribute $70,000 towards the overall cost of that project. We were going to use MFT funds to do it, those were also budgeted in our MFT program. The document tonight that I'm asking for approval on is the IDOT resolution. This is a required, passage of this is required by IDOT to authorize the use of MFT funds. So if approved, this will start the process of us being able to transfer MFT funds to Kane County. I'd answer any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I want to thank everybody for the opportunity you're giving me, and I will show you what I can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to item D this evening, which is the waiver of temporary liquor license fee for the Fox Valley Park District. If you'll recall, we tabled this from our August 11th board meeting, and with that, I'll ask Administrator Oful to summarize.
Thank you. The park district has approached us, they are moving their zombie run from Blackberry Farm over to Stewart Sports Complex. Rulens is going to be serving food there, and they would like they'll serve beer and wine. So they've approached us for a temporary liquor license. We have discussed doing an IGA, kind of for a long-term solution, as they may have more events, but because of the upcoming, you know, the equipment, this one's coming up, we would recommend doing this one on a temporary basis and then working on an agreement going forward. So with that, answer any questions.
Have they been receptive to the idea of an IGA?
We haven't gotten very far in that discussion, so I guess there hasn't been a lot one way or the other.
Are there circumstances, say during Montgomery Fest, where we are obliged to pay a fee to the park district? And have they typically waived those fees?
Do they typically waive the, for some reason, I thought they did, but I am not positive on if they do, so we can look and see.
Hate to be a stick in the mud, but it seems like fair's fair for both sides.
I thought that we tried to include that with the IGA for the Stewart Sports Complex, something about the band shell rental, but I could be wrong on that.
Also about the picnic tables.
And picnic tables.
Where the only ones, I think, were, they allow us to use 50 of their picnic tables. They charge us a nominal fee, five bucks or whatever a table, but we wouldn't be able to get 50 picnic tables from anywhere. So they do allow us to do that, and they give us a couple golf carts that we use sometimes. So I think that's part of the agreement, and then the price, I think, is lower on the stage than most people, so.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Moving on to item E this evening, which is Resolution 2014-015. It's supporting the widening of US Route 30 at Baseline Road from 31, or, I'm sorry, US 31 slash Baseline Road, from 31 all the way west to 47. If you recall, this is something that we discussed at our last board meeting. Do you have anything on this one? Resolution is pretty straightforward. Trustee Youngerman had suggested that we kind of get out in front of this and approve a resolution supporting the widening. Are there any questions on that? Steve, do you have any? Do you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee, sorry.
Trustee Youngerman, yes.
Did I totally miss you? See, it's got to be one.
You wanted to vote on that one. You miss them today, really?
Yes, I do. Trustee Youngerman.
Yeah.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Moving on to item E this evening, which is Resolution 2014-015. It's supporting the widening of US Route 30 at Baseline Road from 31, or, I'm sorry, US 31 slash Baseline Road, from 31 all the way west to 47. If you recall, this is something that we discussed at our last board meeting. Do you have anything on this one? Resolution is pretty straightforward. Trustee Youngerman had suggested that we kind of get out in front of this and approve a resolution supporting the widening. Are there any questions on that? Steve, do you have any? Do you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee, sorry.
Trustee Youngerman, yes.
Did I totally miss you? See, it's got to be one.
You wanted to vote on that one. You miss them today, really?
Yes, I do. Trustee Youngerman.
Yeah.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Moving on to item E this evening, which is Resolution 2014-015. It's supporting the widening of US Route 30 at Baseline Road from 31, or, I'm sorry, US 31 slash Baseline Road, from 31 all the way west to 47. If you recall, this is something that we discussed at our last board meeting. Do you have anything on this one? Resolution is pretty straightforward. Trustee Youngerman had suggested that we kind of get out in front of this and approve a resolution supporting the widening. Are there any questions on that? Steve, do you have any? Do you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes, thank you.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yay.
And that carries 6-0, thank you. Items for discussion this evening. The first item, A, is the salary survey. If you recall, we talked about this at our last meeting, and I think staff is prepared with an updated PowerPoint. That'll kick it over to Megan for this.
Yes, thank you. So this is a continuation of the discussion that we had at the August 11th meeting. Same information presented here, just a different format, so we can kind of make sure that we're all following the same page. There was a lot of information presented last time, and I think it got a little bit confusing. But the issue at hand that we're discussing is adjustment to the salary range for several positions. We kind of got off on discussing merit increases last time, which we can save for future discussion. Merit increases typically happen about, around November 1st, so right now, we're just discussing the salary ranges. So this first slide here is just a list of the municipalities that we surveyed. We looked at a 12-mile radius around Montgomery, and then looked within the borders of Routes 47, 126, 59, and 38, and these are the eight communities that we came up with. We did exclude Aurora, just due to their size. Really no comparison whatsoever in size or setup. If you look at the communities, Justin mentioned this last time. Excuse me. That the budget numbers don't really mean a whole lot in terms of comparison. Batavia and Geneva have very, very large budgets, but they also have their own fire departments, engineering departments, electric utilities, cemeteries that they run, wastewater treatment, so that's all included in their large budgets. So just looking at the population, Montgomery falls right about in the middle of the eight that we surveyed. Okay, so the survey was modeled after one that was designed by Forreys Associates. They're a public sector management consulting firm, and I followed a survey that I actually received from them on, for the village of Richland Park. The survey was set up to provide a brief description of our positions and asked the other municipalities to respond with the information for their position most closely matching ours. So it was very explicit instructions that said, do not rely on the job titles alone, please read the job description before making any job matches. So hopefully, everyone really did read the job descriptions and provide their most closely matching position. If they had multiple people in one position, they were asked to provide the actual, or provide the average actual salary for their employees. Some did that, some did not, some just put that they had multiple and didn't provide a number in the actual range. And then all the positions were standardized to 40 hours per week for comparison's sake. Some people had, you know, employees that only worked 35 hours in a position, or worked, you know, 20 hours part-time, so I standardized them all to 40 hours. After we got all the results back, we analyzed the data, and this is how we determined whether or not we would recommend a change to the salary range for position. So if our, if the village's current range was within 5% of the average of the municipalities surveyed, we did not recommend a change. And there were 11 positions that we are recommending no change to the current salary range. If there was a greater than 5% deviation from the
Merit increases typically happen about around November first, um, so right now, we're just discussing, uh, the salary ranges. Uh, so this first slide here is just a list of the municipalities that we surveyed. Uh, we looked at a twelve-mile radius around Montgomery, um, and then looked within the borders of Routes forty-seven, one-twenty-six, fifty-nine, and thirty-eight. And these are the eight communities that, um, we came up with. We did exclude Aurora, uh, just due to their size. Really no comparison whatsoever in, in size or, or setup. If you look at the, the communities, Justin mentioned this last time.
Excuse me.
That the, the budget numbers don't really mean a whole lot in terms of comparison. Batavia, Batavia and Geneva have very, very large budgets, but they also have their own, uh, fire departments, engineering departments, electric utilities, um, cemeteries that they run, um, wastewater treatment, um, so that's all included in their large budgets. So just looking at the population, Montgomery Falls, um, right about in the middle of the eight that we, uh, surveyed. So, uh, the survey, uh, was modeled after, uh, one that was designed by Forreys Associates. They're a public sector management consulting firm. And I, I followed a survey that I actually received from them on, uh, for the Village of Richland Park. Um, the survey was set up to provide a brief description of our positions and asked, um, asked the other municipalities to respond with the information for their position most closely matching ours. So it was very explicit instructions that said, do not rely on the job titles alone. Please read the job description before making any job matches. So, um, hopefully everyone really did read the job descriptions and, and provide their most closely matching position. Um, if they had multiple people in one position, they were ac- asked to provide the actual, or provide the average actual salary, um, for their employees. Um, some did that, some did not, some just put that they had multiple and didn't provide a number in the actual range. And then all the positions were standardized to forty hours per week for comparison's sake. Some people had, um, you know, employees that only worked thirty-five hours in a position or were, you know, twenty hours part-time. So I standardized them all to forty hours. Uh, after we got all the results back, we analyzed the data, and, uh, this is how we determined whether or not we would recommend a change to the salary range for position. So if our, if the village's, um, current range was within five percent of the average of the municipality surveyed, we did not recommend a change, and there were eleven positions, um, that we are recommending no change to the current salary range. If there was a greater than five percent deviation from the average, um, we're recommending, recommending a change to the range, and there's six positions uh, that fell into that category. And then we had three positions that are new, um, so there was no range established, and we are recommending, um, adopting the average. So I will go through, um, all of the positions briefly, um, and what our recommended changes are, and then we'll, uh, open it up to discussion. So starting with the six positions that we're recommending, um, adjusting the range for. Uh, the first is the building inspection supervisor. And you can see the, the top box is the, um, responses from the survey. So there was four communities that had, um, a similar position that responded. And then at the bottom, uh, it shows our current range, sixty-three to eighty-six. The average was seventy-one to one oh-four. And both of those, the, the minimum and maximum deviated more than five percent. To kind of create some equity and a kind of a hierarchy within the community development department, rather than adopting the average range, we're, we're just recommending moving it within the five percent. So we are recommending to increase the minimum and the maximum of the building inspection supervisor range.
I have a quick question, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, and, um, this is an example for the, the rest of them, and the, this is the reason I'm asking on the first one. If the, um, our actual, for example, say, for instance, our actual was less than what the low average was. Are we talking about bumping that person up to the now low actual, or, or, excuse me, or low average?
If, if their current salary is below the minimum, yes, we would bump them up to the minimum. But you, but you.
I had to follow.
But you can also see on the box above, um, the, the third column, we hit, uh, Montgomery's highlighted in yellow, so a person in this position is currently making seventy-five thousand dollars, um, which falls within our current range, and it also falls within, uh, the range that we're recommending. So there'd be no change to the current salary of this person, it's just increasing, um, the range and their, their potential.
But your question is correct, if, if the shift in the range would cause them to be below the minimum, the new minimum, they would be moved to that new minimum. We wouldn't have somebody below the minimum.
And conversely, if it was, they were over our new maximum, would we be reducing them?
Generally, what we've done past has been, we freeze them until the range catches them, and they're not eligible to move anywhere.
What's the likely, what's the lifespan of this range?
Uh, generally, we, we look at it every year to see where it needs to stand. We generally adopt it with the budget each year.
I guess here's my question, I was gonna let her finish, but since you guys brought some of this up. From my Statistics one oh-one class in college, it's what you put in your, your figures that make your statistics fall where you want it to be. To me, Plainfield, Geneva, Batavia, and Warrenville, I don't know if Warrenville ain't in there, yes, it is, down at the bottom, are not even close to our, our same town. I, I said this last week, uh, we're still Yorkville, North Aurora, Oswego, and Sugar Grove. Those are the ones that are in our, and if you look at this particular one, none of them have, except Yorkville, have a building inspector. So technically, your average, if you take away the, the ones that have ninety-five million, or ninety-five, uh, million yen in their budget, uh, you take that away, you have Yorkville at eighty-six, that's what our high is. And even if you gave our building inspector a thirteen thousand dollar raise or whatever, he'd still be within that range. Why do we have to raise that if he falls right in the middle of that? I don't, I don't understand why we have to raise it, I don't see why I have to do anything with it.
I understand you have issues with the communities that are in there. We tried to look at our labor market, so we picked an area, you know, we drew out what we felt were, were competing for employees, and we took every community in there. We didn't cherry pick, well, we want these, those. We took every community in that circle, with the exception of Aurora, because they are not comparable to us, we felt, and Plano, because they're not really comparable the other way, most of their employees are part-time. But otherwise, we said, we feel this is our labor market, and we took every community within that range.
No, but in statistics, you could drop it down to eight miles. Include Plano, because they're small, you're including Plainfield, which is forty thousand people, that's not even close. I mean, you miles to compare Aurora, I bet you Aurora probably pays less than Plainfield does in a lot of cases. I'm just saying, I'm more interested in those four towns, not the rest of them. Uh, she mentioned Batavia having their own water and all, this raises higher. Actually, Yorkville does too, and they treat their own water and all that too, and yet their budget's about the same. I'm more interested in them than Batavia, Geneva, Plainfield, who's way out of our class money-wise, to me.
We did feel that, you know, twelve miles was a reasonable distance for, for anyone to drive to work. Most of our employees do live within the circle, um, you know, so we, we felt that if anyone lives within the circle as well, then they're, they're willing to.
But if you take Plainfield, if you take Plainfield in, who's the high end, then you have to take the low end in statistics, which is Plano.
No, Aurora and Plano were the, were the high and the low, so we took them out because of that. I mean, we can add Aurora and Plano back in, but it, it's, it's gonna incre- it's gonna increase the ranges more if we do that.
Well, like I say, I'm only interested in those four, four towns, that's all I'm interested in.
Aurora.
And, and these, the two town, or the towns that have, you know, greater population and more services, those, they have many more positions that we're not even, I mean, we didn't even ask them about, we didn't ask them for all their positions, we asked them for the positions they had that were similar to ours, so.
Like this particular one has none of them, and the towns I mentioned hardly. But I, I, I guess I question again, I, I'll say it, we could give that person a huge raise, ten thousand dollar raise, I, I misquoted that, thirteen. You give him a ten thousand dollar raise, and he's still between the low and the high. Why do we have to move this at all, then? Just leave it like it is? I don't, I don't get why we have to move it up, doesn't make sense to me.
Every year, we try and look at the communities that we feel we compete with, and we want to be in line with them. We, this is the average, so that's what we're trying to do. I mean, yes, you can go on and say, we only want to compare to Oswego, you can pick and choose. We try to come with a methodology, rather than just cherry picking communities here or there. So we took a range that we felt was a reasonable labor market to compare ourselves to, and as I said, we took every community within that circle. We didn't just pick some of them, we took all the ones that fell within there.
Do you guys? We did the building inspection supervisor, do you guys want to go through the other ones? Because I think.
I actually, I have a question about that one.
Okay.
And I'm looking for some common knowledge, local knowledge from Justin and, uh, Rich. Sugar Grove doesn't have a building inspector?
This is the building inspection supervisor, so it's not a building inspector position, it's the building inspection supervisor. Sugar Grove has a building inspector, they used to have a chief code enforcement officer. When the downturn hit, they eliminated that position. So this is the supervisor, just because our position currently encompasses both inspections and supervision, because this technically has supervision over our code enforcement officer position. So this is a plan reviewer and a building inspector wrapped into one. That's what, you know, we're doing.
Okay, that, I thank you for the clarification, I, I found it odd that they didn't have building inspectors.
I've.
This is not to say that all of these other communities that are not listed do not have building inspectors. They do, they either have the service that they pay for on a private basis, or they have a building inspector on staff. But that's not the position that's being reviewed here.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
The, um, are we just discussing these tonight, we're not taking any action?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's move on. Megan, if you want to keep going on that one.
I do have a question that might affect the others, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, to clarify in my mind at least, let's take this building inspectors supervisor position as an example. The absolute two high numbers of this range are being driven by people who've been on the job for twenty-six years in almost fifteen years, which means that that range is also recognizing their longevity. How do you factor that into your mathematics to arrive at a, a practical range?
The range won't, the range wouldn't be dependent on their longevity, their actual salary would be dependent on their longevity. The range is just how high they can go. I mean, generally, if they've been there longer, they're going to be closer to the top of the range.
Well, let's look at Batavia, for example, the actual and the high are identical.
Right, it's someone who's been there a very long time, so they're at the top of their range.
And they're tapping their range up every year that person is there, so it's skewing that high. Yeah, we don't know what they're doing with their range, we just know where it's at now, and that person's at the top.
Same with the, um, well, less true with Plainfield, but pretty close. If you pulled Batavia out of this equation because of that circumstance, a twenty-six-year tenured employee, did you look at the numbers that way?
The actuals are not factored, factored into the, the average ranges below, the actuals are just there.
It, it doesn't affect how you set your range, I mean, we're not setting our ranges based on how long an employee's been in a position. That we just put that for information to see how long their people had been there. I mean, the longer they've been there, they'll be higher in the range, but the range isn't set by the length of time an employee's been there. The range is set generally by the market. Now, that, that person's at the top because of how long they've been there.
I think likely the range is following.
Well, that person's probably following the range, I mean, but the range isn't being set by, by that, I would, I would offer. The person's probably keeping up with the range, because if they're getting, they've been there that long, they're probably a good employee, and they're getting increases. But the range is moving on its own based on the market.
Well, that's a double-edged sword, then, the next time we need to discuss in changing a range because the employee's hit the ceiling, we could say, well, that doesn't matter.
Well, that's not, we wouldn't recommend changing it because employees hit the ceiling. We would recommend changing it if the market, if we look like we're behind in the market, or if we're ahead of the market, adjusting it back.
So the, the spread in the market should be forty thousand dollars, thirty thousand dollars? From comparable community to comparable community?
From min to max? Yeah, I mean, that's not, not atypical.
Is the, is the general thought process that the low end is, let's say, your first year as, and then twenty-some years later at the end, you might be at the high? Is that?
Yeah.
Is that the general school of thought?
Generally, yeah.
Well, it depends on how the ranges work. And, uh, I mean, when I was in Naperville, we had fifteen, twenty-year employees that were at the midpoint in the range, because of the way they do their system. And there are places where you'll hit the, you know, you'll hit the top in seven or eight years, depending. It really depends on, on what the increase system is.
Can you calculate that in your head, Justin?
He can, he just doesn't want to show off.
No, I can't. Sorry.
Okay.
All right, let's.
Okay. Okay, so moving on, the next, uh, position that we are recommending adjusting the range for is the code enforcement officer. Uh, you can see seven of the eight communities, um, responded that they also have a code enforcement officer. And below, you can see that our current range, uh, was seven point six eight percent below the average on the minimum, and fourteen point seven one percent below the average on the maximum, and so we are, um, recommending adopting the average range for that one. The third position that we're recommending an adjustment for is the accounts payable clerk. Um, all eight communities had a similar position. For that one, we were actually above the average by nine point seven one percent, um, on the low end, and, um, above the average on the high end by three point nine nine percent. So we are recommending decreasing the minimum of that range to match the average. Um, and because the maximum fell within the, the five percent deviation, um, leaving the maximum where it is. Uh, for the deputy chief of police, um, six of the eight communities responded, uh, with a similar position. Uh, you can see below that we were, um, beneath the average range, um, on both the minimum and maximum. So we are recommending moving, um, our range, uh, to be just within the, the five percent deviation from the average, uh, because there's so many different layers, uh, within the, um, police department. We, rather than matching the average, um, we decided to just recommend coming within the five percent for that one. And then the sergeant range, um, all eight communities responded to that one, and we were well below the, the average minimum range, um, for this position, um, and just slightly below the average, um, maximum, so we are, uh, recommending, um, adjusting the minimum to come within five percent of the average, and, um, matching the average maximum for the sergeant range.
Sorry, I have questions. In, on the survey design, it says all positions are standardized to forty hours a week. You do realize that the police sergeants work eight-and-a-half hour days, correct?
They're paid for forty hours per week.
But you do realize that they are required to be, be here eight-and-a-half hours a day, correct? Okay. In checking, like, for instance, we see that Yorkville, the police sergeant is a union position. North Aurora, the police sergeant is a union position, but it doesn't say that here. And the reason I found that out is because I called North Aurora, and I asked, why, why don't we know of some of these others? Why are we missing that information?
I just, uh, listed what they provided to me. So they, some of them listed that, some of them did not. Uh, chief, you may know better than I do which ones are union, which ones are not. I believe a majority of them are union, which we kind of want to avoid.
No, I, I actually called Batavia, I believe, today, I called Geneva, I called Plainfield, I called North Aurora, Oswego didn't answer. So, I mean, I, there were, were, I know North Aurora was, uh, I believe Batavia was not. But I would think that that sort of information would be helpful in determining exactly where our lows and highs are as far as our police sergeant.
Uh, I do not know, to answer her question, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, that was kind of my question is, there's probably a billion different pieces of data that we can put into this, but how would that shape, in your mind, the ranges? What we would be willing to offer?
Our, I'd, hold on.
Megan? I'm guessing that the years in the position isn't listed as a piece of data here, just because of multiple, kind of like it wasn't on ours, multiples?
Right.
It becomes, this becomes an eleven seventeen, and Jeff doesn't like to spend that money on paper? No. Okay. I, I was just, I mean, I was just wondering about that, because our sergeant corps is pretty young, considering some of the surrounding communities may be in more mature sergeant pool.
I'm, I'm trying to con- construct my question in a different way. Okay, when we, when we look at the police sergeant position, we have multiple sergeants, and back to my original question, as far as on that building inspection supervisor page, where, or, or whatever, if the, the, the low, the average low is higher than what they are making, they'd be bumped up to that, that new average low. Now, in the case of police sergeant, we've had sergeants who have been here for years, they've been topped out for years. If that happens, now our new, um, our new high is ninety-three one one four, and now we're saying we're going to move our average to ninety-nine oh one oh. Does that topped-out individual automatically go to ninety-nine oh one oh?
No.
It just, uh, gives them the, the potential to move up that far.
But they've been stuck in the same salary range for years.
Our top is below the max currently.
Why?
These things, if they've been at the, if they've been stuck at the top for three or four years, had nowhere to grow, now they've got room to grow. It feels they should automatically move, but.
The point I was making is that our top-paid sergeant is below our ceiling currently. So they're obviously not maxed out currently, so that wouldn't apply.
Right, for all these positions that we're recommending adjusting the ranges for, there's no one that falls outside of the range that we're recommending. So those wouldn't mean increases for anybody.
Two of them, two of the positions.
When we get to, when we get to the new, for the new positions, for none of our existing ranges. It's not an issue.
And my other question, and I guess this is, are sergeants, the way that they are, they go from their, if, I'm a new, I'm a new police sergeant for Village Montgomery. I started out at $83,142. I'm assuming it doesn't matter if I'm sergeant on the afternoon, I'm sergeant in the midnights, I'm whatever. Is it a yearly, how many years is the duration between low and high?
It depends on what they're awarded for merit increases.
Is it merit?
It is merit.
And it's not step increases?
Because they are non-union, so it's based on merit.
Okay.
And that was, I think, part of what makes the question about whether these positions are union and non-union relevant, because of the step increase provision.
Right.
Well, the other question is, and I, Chief, you may know better than anyone, or Armando, do all the sergeants get overtime in all communities? Is that commonplace, or are some of those exempt positions, where somebody may be bumped up pretty high on the scale?
No.
But they're not getting overtime?
No, no sergeant rank is exempt, so they're getting overtime.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on. So the last of the six existing positions that we're recommending adjusting the range to is the police records clerk. We were pretty close on the minimum, so we're not recommending changing the minimum of the range. However, we are recommending increasing the maximum of the range to match the average, as we fell almost 8% below the average on that one.
Megan?
Yes.
Based on the data from last week, the records clerk number one is at 56174, exceeding this maximum range of 54.
So her salary would stay frozen. She wouldn't be eligible for an increase until such time that she fell back within the range.
So I just want to understand the logic. So we'll freeze that person, but somebody who's below the range will automatically pop them all the way up, instead of them stepping up?
Well, they'll get merit, they'll be eligible for merit increases.
No, but if they're below the minimum, we're moving them up.
Below the minimum, yes.
But if they're above, we're not moving them down.
Automatically pop them all the way up to the minimum. But this person is.
Frozen, because they're above the maximum.
In both instances, we're trying not to punish the employee for something that's not really their fault.
Okay, so, as I said, there was three positions that we did not have a range established for, so we're recommending adopting the average. The first is the accounting manager in the finance department. So the, all eight communities had a similar position. And so we are recommending matching the average of that range, which you can see below. It's 55578 to 78720. And this position, I guess you mentioned, replaced the customer service specialist. When she retired, the department was reorganized a little bit. So this is a supervisory position, and an exempt position. The customer service specialist was neither of those. The human resources manager, there is four communities that had similar positions. And again, we are recommending adopting the average range. This position replaced the management analyst position, which was typically filled by, you know, a recent MPA grad. I think it's kind of the history, who helped out in a variety of areas. Now it is a focused HR position. And again, we're recommending adopting the average.
You, now, I hope the board realizes, this is a 43, or excuse me, $4,333 increase for an individual who's been with the village for less than a year.
I actually have a couple of questions about these two positions. When, because the people are here, or the positions were filled relatively recently. So there had to be a range in mind when you were interviewing the people. I don't understand how we can say there's no established range for us. You didn't go in and say, "55 is it? No higher, no lower? There was negotiation involved?" So I don't understand why we're saying there's no range involved, and that we would have to move a range at this point in time, when they haven't even been here for a year.
I can answer the first part. I mean, we looked at the positions we had, and tried to see which one we thought it was reasonable to, and put it in that range for when we advertised for pay. So I think for this one, we might have used the management analyst. I don't remember what we used for accounting manager. But we tried to look at a position we had that we thought, you know, skill-wise was similar, and so we tried to go that way with the range. We didn't go out and seek, you know, to set it from other communities. We just sort of did a gut check to do it. And this is the first time we've gone out to check.
Both of these had, basically, that the title changed. So if you're using the range for the former name of the position, why wouldn't we just use that as our range? And again, I don't see why we would have to be moving these ranges so soon.
Well, my point is, if we hired this person for accounting manager at 55, and we're going to bump the minimum range to 55578, come merit time, they're barely above the minimum pay scale for that position. So then it's going to warrant a bigger merit increase to get them off of the bottom, to get them off the floor.
No, they'll get what merit increase they get. And if they stay near the bottom, then they.
Yeah, do our non-union, that's it. There's no cost-of-living increase.
Right.
But typically, when we approve the budget, we bump the ranges a certain percent, don't we, every year?
In the past, we have. This year, instead of bumping all the ranges, we've done this to just see which ones need to be adjusted.
So if the cost-of-living increase next year is 2%, let's say, and that person doesn't deserve a raise, but we bump the ranges 2%, that person gets a cost-of-living increase of 2%, if they're at the bottom of the range. Let's say they're just.
If you've got somebody that's at the exact bottom, and the range moves past them, you'd be in the same situation where they're below the range, so.
Or we could just.
But it wouldn't merit a larger merit increase for them, because they're near the bottom.
Or we could just also not bump.
Well, it's just that they, I mean, the minimum may not move.
Okay.
Yeah, that, I'm curious as to why the minimums are moving, just because we're very rarely hiring anybody at the minimum, so the minimum could be $57,000, and we're hiring them at 60. The minimum really doesn't affect that. But it does when it comes to these merit increases. It could come back on us, from that perspective. Sorry, Megan.
You want to do lieutenant?
Yeah.
Okay, the third new position is the lieutenant position. As you're all familiar with, this is a fairly recent addition, and we do not have anyone currently in this position. The number listed as our actual is what was budgeted fiscal year '15. No other communities had a similar, or had a lieutenant position. So for our recommended range, we basically just sandwiched it between the deputy chief of police and the sergeant range, put it right in the middle to establish that range. So that's what our recommendation is based on there.
I have a question about that. Chief and deputy chief, when we discussed the lieutenant position several months ago, there was something about a 5% difference between the sergeant and the lieutenant, and then the lieutenant and the deputy chief. Do you recall that?
Well, in our HR manual, when you're promoted, you're supposed to get a 5%.
Over?
Correct.
Okay.
That pertains to anybody getting promoted.
And that, in this case, that would be the actual salary? We wouldn't necessarily have to worry about the range? Am I understanding correctly?
I didn't understand the question.
Because if we're looking, then.
Then they'd be eligible, you're eligible for at least a 5% increase for being promoted. Now, if 5% doesn't take you into the range, then you'd get whatever it took to get you to the minimum.
To the range.
And if there was no range, because there wasn't one.
Then it would be 5% for our HR manual.
I think, if I'm correct, you're asking, will it be 5% above the top of the range versus 5% above the highest-paid person in the range below? Is that what you're asking?
No, I think she's talking about individually.
Right, I'm asking, when you are looking at, like, for the lieutenant position, so that person needs to be 5% over all of the sergeants? Like, the highest-paid sergeant, correct?
Correct. You can't have a sergeant making more than.
Making more than the lieutenant. Okay, so the range isn't necessarily going to really play into this one, because we have sergeants making, making more than the minimum? Okay, I understand. I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, there was 11 positions that we're not recommending any change for. So the next two slides just list what those positions are, and what their deviations were from the averages. Just for your information, those are the 11 positions that we are not recommending a change for. And then, just to get them all on one page here, this is the salary schedule that we are recommending for approval when it does come back. So I highlighted the six positions that are in yellow, are the six positions that were existing on the salary schedule that we're recommending changes for. And then the three highlighted in blue are the new positions. And they are divided by non-exempt and exempt positions. So the non-exempt positions on the top are eligible for overtime, and the exempt positions on the bottom half are not eligible for overtime.
Do we have, looking at the summary page, an impact on budget report, so we know what the impact of saying yes to this would be?
Moving the, moving these ranges, it doesn't necessarily move persons. There are two exceptions to that, based upon the numbers here. But other than that, there should not be any budgetary impact. We base the budget off of individuals getting the average merit increase that was given last year, which, if you remember from two weeks ago, that number was between 3% and 3.5%. So that's what we put into the budget for all the positions, other than represented employees.
Couple of other questions, if I may. Why do we go through this process now, instead of during the budgeting phase of our deliberation?
We did actually do it during the budget phase. And we'd recommend, I think, moving all the ranges 2%. And the question came up then, is why are we moving them all? You know, so we said, "Well, let's hold off, we'll go and check and see." And as it came back, you know, 11 of the positions, we don't need to move, so. So that was that, basically, because of a board suggestion.
The other question I would have, since merit increase can be up to 4%, do we have anything that would document for us what the standards for a merit increase might be?
We do, from our evaluation forms, our criteria, we can get those to the board.
I noticed the low was 1%, and that was described as below competent. And that struck me as kind of odd, that we would give a below competent raise of any kind. So that seemed like a gimme to me.
We haven't decided the merit exactly yet, have we? In the public works contract, it's 4%. The last sheet I got was 5%, which I could not understand, when everybody else is nicely given 2.25%. Colas, some of these towns, when the CIP's only 1517, and they're just automatically... It's been like that for a long time with municipalities, and that's one thing that I said, "I don't understand, somebody's got to say, 'It doesn't work anymore.'" And we did move to that with merit increases, but to have a 5% higher than all the rest of them, doesn't even make sense. I mean, it's like, "Yeah, we're going to change, but we're going to change the worst, instead of the better." And.
Yeah, and we're not looking to settle that amount tonight, I mean, the merit.
I'd like to have discussion on it tonight, though.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll have discussion on it. I was just trying to separate the two.
Yes.
The two issues.
I agree.
Trustee Bond, were you perhaps looking at the Public Works Union agreement? It lays out 1%, 2%, and 3%, 4%.
That's possible, it's not part of this document tonight, so.
It was a separate document handed out last week.
Yeah, I did read it last.
It's in the agreement. So based on those employees who are in the bargaining unit, depending on their rating, which is a merit rating, they can get anywhere from 1% to 4%.
That doesn't say union. Oh, yes it does, bargaining unit.
So that would impact the police department as well?
No, this is public, this is.
Public Works.
This is International Union of Operating Engineers agreement. That's public works, maintenance employees.
I think the last comment I would have, normally, on decisions of this nature, we would invite input from the department heads, and they would be making a presentation to us as well. Whether we do that in executive session or open session, I value the opinion of our department heads on this, and would like to hear it.
As far as executive session goes, that's for the appointment, employment compensation of specific employees. This is a range discussion.
Okay, then we could have that discussion in public.
What information would you like from the department heads?
I'd like for them to advise on their feelings about this, like they would any other topic that might be on the agenda.
Okay.
Could we? Anybody with any comments now, they can certainly make them. The one, three things that have been bugging me that I will mention is the lieutenant, the building inspection supervisor, and human resources manager. The data set that we have for those is three or less. And to me, that's not, I just get an unsettled feeling, because one piece of data that's significantly higher than the other ones will throw off the average significantly. So I'd like you to come up with some other justification, other than looking internally, like a state average, or pulling in some other cities. I know it might be weird for this one piece of data, but to change these ranges for these three, and they're all going up, based on three or less pieces of data, to me, isn't, doesn't work.
And the human resources manager position? Teresa pointed this out, this is a new position, it replaces the management analyst of HR. What was the range for that? Granted, this new position's a little bit more, but at least it would give us a baseline. Because we're also throwing in here, Plainfield and Geneva, how many employees do they have, comparatively? You know, in an HR director position, manager position, that's a huge factor. You know, I'm guessing that Plainfield has.
They also have to look, they probably have more than just that position. She probably has some.
Support underneath.
Plainfield probably has some support.
I can see they definitely have more support, but at the same time, that's why I still said, I'd throw out all those big towns. Because they don't have support, or they do have support, and the smaller ones don't have. And in this case, you're down to, and it changes all your averages. I mean, like, code enforcement comes down almost with a penny, what we're advertising to pay, if you take the big towns out. Which means all the other towns our size, or up and down our, the four that I mentioned, were perfect. So why do we have to change the ranges? So why do we have to change the ranges? I still don't understand that too much. The building, or human resources, Oswego's got one, other than that, nobody else has got one. And to me, they have to have somebody doing that work. I mean, it's an important position. We all talked about that before. It's gonna be getting more important all the time, and she probably gonna need support staff somewhere along the line. I mean, it's just that way. But to have nobody listed in the four towns I mentioned, I don't get it.
They may not have anybody, because, I mean, until recently, we didn't either.
No.
It was just stuff that was picked up by other staff, so that may be what the other towns do.
But instead of using Plainfield or Batavia with a 90, with four times our budget, why not use Oswego, which is still bigger than us by, you know, quite a bit, double our size almost, say, or whatever, and use theirs range instead? That's what I'm saying. We're throwing ranges out here that are going by... Like, even say even Warrenville's our size, but Warrenville's between Naperville and Wheaton, that's a rich community. I mean, it's just not, I know, we go back to where the 12-mile radius is and all that.
We picked a methodology we thought was sound. I mean, I can't help if you don't agree with it, and if you don't, that's fine. We can change it, but that's, we felt we had a solid methodology that we were using.
And I think, you know, part of the point is, too, with it being that 12-mile radius is when, you know, that person in the position at Plainfield or at Warrenville, you know, decides to retire or leave, we don't want our employees to apply for those positions, we want them to stay here.
It's true, but as I mentioned before, we're the highest in almost these four communities right now. I mean, that's why you came, Justin, Rich. I mean, this is, our people are coming here for a reason. We pay good, we're supposed to be a good place to work. We're not losing people. If I was losing people, and I think Yorkville, I've seen Yorkvilles, I kept forms from a couple of years ago, and they gave some people, like, 7% raises, probably to keep them, because they were so low. But now they're getting up there where they're almost trying to compete with us, and it's gonna be, if they keep going like 7% all the time or 3%, you're gonna have some differences. But somebody's gotta draw the line and say, are you willing to drive to Warrenville through all that traffic for an extra $1,000? Most people won't.
Yeah, that's the point, where it's not an extra $1,000. That's why we're trying to stay with them, because if we can keep it within that, then we feel we got a good shot.
Well, your ranges are all right, though, like they are. I mean, I don't, you can give people $10,000 raises, and they're still within that range. Why do you have to extend it? I don't, I still, nobody's answered that question for me.
It doesn't matter where the person is in the range. Like I said, we're trying to set our ranges to be competitive with the group we think we're competing with. That's why we're setting the ranges. It doesn't have anything to do with where the current employees are.
My, I did all the averages for those four, and almost all the averages went down 10 grand. If we just take those four and get the big cities out of there. And that would bring our ranges down to really, right, like you are now. We're pretty good on our ranges. Now, there's some, like, the newer positions, yeah, you gotta put ranges in there. And I don't mind going an average of those four cities, and we're fine.
As you said, I mean, we can do that, and as you said, we're getting employees from Sugar Grove, from Yorkville, coming here. Our concern is that, as Megan said, those positions in Batavia and Geneva, when they open up, our employees are gonna migrate there, because we're that, because we won't be comparable.
In all these years, I haven't had anybody do that. I know one went to Aurora from Public Works, I think, a secretary.
I mean, we used to lose people to Aurora quite a bit.
Please, please, yeah, but that's the only one I know, the one I, I don't remember anybody going to the other four cities that I'm talking about.
I think the reason, because you asked why we're looking at these ranges, is because we asked for it. Because we were looking at that 2% bump, and why are we doing this? Let's analyze and get some comparables, look at them, and now this is, this becomes the new baseline, so that for the next five years, we can look at those 2% increases. We can do it, because we now have a good, solid foundation to come from. I think what Denny's questioning is the data set, that those big cities are in there. But again, it's data, and I did what Denny did. I went through and I picked what I thought were my comparables in my head, and eliminated some of those high ones, and, yeah, some of the ranges moved, some of them didn't move that much. You know, you can manipulate the data however you want to, but to answer your point, we asked for this so that we could get that new baseline, so that we can look at next year's budget and do 2%. We can comfortably do that, because we actually know where everybody else is at. So I don't have an issue with, I mean, again, the data set is what it is. We picked what we thought was gonna be good, and now we're second guessing it.
Right.
It's easy to Monday morning quarterback.
Yeah, we could add Aurora and Plainfield and six others, and divide it different ways, and...
Change your stats, easy.
Yeah, we could probably do this 1,000 different ways, if we wanted to. But I think these are comparable communities for employment purposes. If I lived in town and worked for Montgomery, I could very easily go get a job in Batavia or Geneva.
I guess that's where I kinda disagree with you. I'm still, those four cities right down the river, that's it. I can't see, with $95 million budgets and a lot more employees, and comparing us. You just don't, I don't know, it's like, I suppose if a guy, he's in a little factory and wants to go to Cat, yeah, you ain't gonna stop him no matter what, and salary-wise, you can't compare to them, say. But at the same time, if you're equal to the people your size, you could probably keep the guy there.
Which four cities are, in your mind? I'm just trying to...
Oswego, Yorkville, Sugar Grove, and us. We're all the same size. North Aurora. And the budgets are similar.
I did the same thing when I looked at it as well. I looked at those cities, and the budget, the larger cities that have the larger budget, it does play into it. We can't stop someone from going to Batavia, and they would get paid more money there, because they have more money to work with. That's why it's important and why it's significant when we look at that. The other thing that I would point out, for me, this is a snapshot, this is guidance for what we're gonna do. Montgomery is Montgomery, we're unique, and we're gonna make this decision. We don't have to be just like some other town. We're the ones that are gonna make the decision, and I think we should just use this information that's here as a guideline for what we're going to do.
Any other comments this evening on this? I think we had a few questions, potentially, that we could answer, and would you guys feel comfortable putting... We could put this on discussion for a future meeting, or we could put it on for possible action, or we can discuss it one more time?
I'd like to discuss it one more time. Let's beat this dead horse a little bit longer.
And taking a step back, I really do appreciate that staff and the board are kinda taking a very close look at this, because this does set, in my mind, you know, when we look to hire, we don't hire anybody, we have to hire them in the range. And it's not every day where we hire somebody at the bottom, so really setting the top is important. I think everybody's taking a good look at that, so...
Trustee Bond asked about getting, you know, our scoring criteria for the evaluations, which we can do. Other than that, I'm not sure what new information I have...
Department head input.
Okay.
And these three, any other piece of data for those three?
Okay, yeah, I've got that note down. All right, well, yes, we can bring that back for discussion, then?
Awesome. Thank you, Megan, I appreciate it. The PowerPoint tonight was actually very helpful. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the TIF marketing plan. With that, I'll ask Director Young for his presentation.
Thank you. We've been working for a while on the community development and with administration on looking at how to market the TIF district, and we've kinda done it on a piecemeal basis to date. We've had it in place for about six months now. I've put together a couple outlines, and it's rough at this point in time, so I'm really looking for input. If there's suggestions that you have, please give them to me tonight, or to Jeff, or in the week to come, I'd appreciate it. Kinda broke it down, the one page that we looked at in terms of a draft marketing plan outline for the TIF District 2 area would be, first off, to talk about the product. And the product is the 580 acres that make up the TIF 2 marketing area. So with that, we wanna boil that down to include information about brokers, ownership information, and anything that goes along with utilities, zoning, and plaid information that we have of record today, and then update our records, so that that is a workable tool as either the MEDC or the villages approached about property within the TIF district. So we wanna talk about the product. Then we wanna have what I call a snapshot view, or some people would call an elevator story, that we're all saying the same thing about the TIF district itself. So it's not just piecemeal, that one trustee talks to a broker and it's one story, or some business comes to me and they get a different story. We wanna develop what we would call an elevator story, so that we're all on the same page, we're talking about the same points, and how we go about looking at growing the industrial park primarily, and then the selected commercial properties that we have along Orchard. So we're gonna be developing that and coming back to you with that. Marketing tools, I look at as a number of different types of things, and then one of the things is what I passed out tonight and you had in your packet, but not in a color format. It's a mailer, it's very simple. You open it up, and it talks about the TIF district. It talks about the contact people to go to either myself or Shar and talk about the TIF district, and then it shows the map. The map, quite honestly, needs a little bit of work. The street names are a little bit tough to read. I wanna have arrows on there that direct you to the intersection of Orchard and 88, and then also extend the map a little bit further to the bottom, so that we pick up the intersection of Orchard and 30, and then some arrows to 47, and then to 31. But I think it's pretty clean in terms of the colors that it shows where the commercial possibilities are and where the industrial possibilities are. And then tried to work up a few points as you close it out, and then a new slogan that I would like your input on. If you feel it's kinda hokey, or you think it's something that can grab somebody's attention, please feel free to comment on that. That's just one marketing tool. I think, together with the MEDC, we do a lot of other things with ICSC. We're getting more involved with area industrial real estate, industrial real estate brokers, and a few other organizations, and then looking at things like WSBY, maybe some radio interviews and that type of thing to talk about the industrial park. The other thing I think that we need to do on a consistent basis is review what we would call strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that involves knowing what our neighbors are doing. I just heard, for instance, a candidate for trustee in Oswego talking about her, she just announced that she's gonna run, and I can't remember her name, said that her main emphasis is going to be on economic development, and that she wants Oswego to do what Montgomery and Yorkville are doing. I thought that was interesting. But that's, you need to know what your neighbors are doing. We need to know about those communities that are around us, that are closer to 88, that maybe have better access. What are they doing in terms of how they market themselves, and then what can we do to combat that? The other thing that's in this flyer, or mailer, I think it's important to talk about not only the TIF district, but also what other opportunities through employee training, which can be accomplished through Wabanzie, what state grants, where we have a special state grant consultant that's worked with us, for instance, in the situation we looked at with Central, Center Point Properties just recently. And then the revolving loan fund. Market the revolving loan fund as, at the same time as that we're marketing the TIF. So those are just some ideas on a brief layout, like your input. We're gonna try to change as much as we can on this mailer in a short time period, and then get it out to hopefully hundreds of brokers and different organizations, and both industrial companies and selected number of commercial people. So I welcome any input on that.
If you have any, I know you and Shar both have contacts for all these agencies. Maybe send a draft to this, to a few of them, just see if there's any key thing that's missing, or that kind of thing.
Sure.
And if you have any comments, mark it up and pass it on back to them.
Thank you.
So we can move on. Thank you, Rich. And lastly, is there any new or unfinished business this evening?
I do have one point, excuse me. We just recently found out, within a matter of days, that there'll be a groundbreaking tomorrow afternoon at the new Murphy Oil Site gas station. For those of you that don't know, that's just south of 30, near Earth Movers. So you could park in the Walmart parking lot. If you're available, it's at 2:30 tomorrow. And we know that that's difficult in the middle of the day for people to make, but they moved the time initially, a few weeks ago, apparently, they were talking about an earlier 9 o'clock groundbreaking, but because of people that are coming in from their corporate office, they moved it to mid-afternoon. We'll have representatives there from, obviously, the administration here and my department, and I know Shar's gonna be there from MEDC, so we have it covered, but I wanted to make it available to the board in case you are available.
Do we have a timeline on when that might be open to the public?
I know that it'll be very quick, because it's a, for lack of a better term, prefab building that's being put together, actually, in Georgia right now. So it'll be quick. I would say probably before the first of the year, and it should be operational.
I meant to email somebody about this today. All of my neighbors last weekend were talking about the... Maybe they were listening to what Steve was saying. Route 30, road construction project, going from Orchard West. And so either they're starting construction on it, widening it tomorrow, or doing something else, but...
Not quite, kind of an infill project. Each year, the Department of Transportation puts together what they call various resurfacing projects, and their staff throughout the year ranks and quantifies roadways, and generally, for each county, there's a group of resurfacing projects that go out under one bid. So this is the IDOT-Kane County Various Various Resurfacing Project. There's actually two projects in Montgomery. The first one is on Route 30. They'll do some milling and resurfacing and patching on Route 30. It'll remain two lanes, but it will be resurfaced from Orchard Road intersection to Route 47. That's scheduled to start at the end of August, so coming up pretty quickly, right, the 25th? I did speak to the superintendent at Geneva Construction. They anticipate it's gonna be a pretty quick job, probably within a couple of weeks, by the time they get the patching and milling and resurfacing done. There will be some lane closures, some intermittent moving lane closures, so look for flaggers. So at times, the roadway will be down to one lane. The other project is Hill Avenue. That is not a Montgomery, it's not in Montgomery, but it butts Goodwin Drive by Ogden Shopping. And that's gonna be resurfaced from 34 to Montgomery Road. So that'll have less impact on, well, maybe not less impact on Montgomery residents. A lot of people use Hill Avenue, but I don't have a start date for that yet.
Thank you.
I have one quick item. We had in our weekly update, Director Young had actually attended the Illinois Valley Public Transportation Open House for transportation options in Kendall, Grundy, and LaSalle. I also attended that. My focus when I went there as well was on the options for extending the rail. And again, what was said in our update was that we're much more focused or concerned with what Metro has to say in their study. But I just wanted to mention, I did attend it. I picked up some extra stuff, if anyone is interested in taking a look at that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
My only thing is, I wore my green and gold tonight, because the Packers had a great weekend, and I went to bed when the Bears were down at half, but did they ever come back? I didn't quite find that, but anybody wants to talk to me about that later, we're looking forward to the Bears-Packer game next time.
Nobody wants to talk to you about that.
No, okay.
All right, you can see the future meetings on there. We do not have executive session.
Ma'am, excuse me. On the future meetings, I believe, intergovernmental committee and village board, we have Monday, September 23rd. It should be the 22nd. That's the date for Monday. for Monday.
I'll check that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Call the roll? Go ahead.
Trustee Hines.
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marasek.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurley.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes. And we're adjourned, thank you.
Heidi, are you okay? What? Are you okay?